Glad to see everybody online today. This is our first Zoom board meeting. Everyone's healthy and safe, I hope. So we'll go ahead with starting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So Dr. Watson, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Love to.
Okay.
Pledge allegiance.
America.
And to the Republic.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Justice. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Ma, did we get any comments through email today, meeting the afternoon?
No, I have not received any emails.
Okay, so no public comment for tonight. Okay, so we have three reports for this evening. Let's go into Finance and Operations. Mrs. Novak, would you please take us through that report?
Yes, we met on April 27, 2020 at 3:00 PM via Zoom conference. We discussed the white property transfer. Matt reviewed the draft agreement from the City of Lapeer with the committee and asked for their support to proceed with the sale of the white property. The city will absorb the cost on the demo of the building and market for sale. It was the consensus of the committee to approve the agreement. It will be on this agenda for full board approval. And then Mark Rader explained the food service bid and that we need to go out for a bid for a food service contract this year. He reminded us that by the new law, districts must bid out food service contracts every five years and are allowed to renew annually. The bid package must be approved by the state and therefore was sent in the last week. He is hoping to have approval back from the state so that the bid can go out in May and the board can approve in June. Once received, finalized bids will be sent to the committee for review prior to going to the board for approval. And then we talked about bus purchases. It is recommended that we again only purchase four or so buses for the upcoming 2021-2020 fiscal year rather than lease or purchase to replace more of our aging fleet, especially since future funding is so uncertain at this time. He will be reevaluating the situation in the spring of 2021. We agreed that approval or we agreed and approved of this recommendation. And then we reviewed the Lapeer ISD's proposed budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, which was sent to the board in the April 24 weekend there for their review. And we are recommending approval of the ISD proposed budget for 2020-2021. In addition, it was discussed at the May 1 Personnel Meeting. If approved, it will be added to the May 6 Board Meeting Agenda for full approval. And then we discussed the COVID-19 possible budget implications for the next fiscal year. Matt and Mark reviewed the budget implications from the state in regards to the 2021-2022 or 2020-2021 budget. Due to the current circumstances, there are too many unknowns at this time. Hopefully, more information will be forthcoming after the May 15, 2020 Revenue Conference. Some of the challenges we're facing as a district is that we'll be to provide a budget for the 2020-21 with very limited information and settling contracts within all the bargaining units with little to no funding information. The committee will be updated as more information becomes available and it will be discussed on all our board committees. And lastly, we talked about Maple Grove. The district has been working with an agreement with Community Mental Health, CMH, for them to extend their current lease expiring this June 30 for another year, along with a provision for the option to purchase the Maple Grove property. CMH President Lauren Emmons, along with Matt and Mark, have had discussions related to the purchase of the property. The agreement will be finalized and the final copy will be sent to the committee for review once received. We adjourned our meeting at 3:28 PM.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Novak?
I have a question on food service. Wondering if the state would allow the LCS food service employees, if they so desire, to put together a proposal in the form of a bid, if they wanted to compete with outside vendors?
That's a good question, Mike. I'm not sure that they are an independent entity. They're a bargaining group.
Yes.
So I'm still waiting. Actually, as Lisa stated, I sent the required bid documents a week ago, Monday, and they're still processing. They haven't even responded yet with anything because I asked the question, what do we... There's a number of things that we have to do differently, such as not having a walkthrough, which is a mandatory pre-bid meeting to have vendors come in to see the operation in order to be able to dutifully bid on what we're asking to be able to see and figure that out. And they did respond to processing the request, but they didn't have an answer as of still today because I just checked at 6:00 o'clock. So I can ask that question of Tammy Sol up at MDE to get clarity. I've not had that question asked before.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. I just, when we're talking about bidding out work, I think it'd be in our best interest to... If we can get the best bang for our buck, we should go anywhere we can. And if we have people that say, hey, we think we can do this and here's our proposal and that proposal is solid, then we should be able to take a look at it. But yeah, I appreciate you looking into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Nolan, I think we've had something. Did you have a question?
Well, the only thing I was gonna say is that given my recent experience, and I know several of you have had the same experience, I'm gonna be hard pressed to look anywhere else than our current group. I know it has to be bid, but they are amazing people.
I do agree. They are amazing people and they're doing some amazing for us. Yes. Okay, any other questions or comments for Finance and Operations? Thank you, Mrs. Novak.
Thank you.
Let's go into Teaching, Learning and Technology. Dr. Watson, would you give us an update report out?
Yes, ma'am. We had our Zoom meeting on April 30 at 12:00 noon. Committee members there were Mike Keller, Summer Putnam and myself. Others attending, Matt Wondry, Kim Sifferley, Mark Rader and Mary Moss. We called the meeting to order at 12:00. And unfortunately, you'll hear some repetition here because Matt, Mark and Kim reviewed the budget implications. Again, unfortunately, they can't tell us anything further until this May 15 meeting. That's our big day for all our answers. So everything they have is limited. We have no budget really set right now. We need to settle contracts and hear what May 15 has to say. So the topic will be discussed, of course, with all board committees when it comes back around. The committee meeting on May 15 Revenue Conference will give us a lot more information and we'll actually have something to discuss and bring back to the board. At this point in time, it's all a wait and see. And then we adjourned at 12:57. Any questions? Not a lot going on.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Dr. Watson. Let's move into our Personnel Committee. Mr. Nolan, would you give us a report?
Certainly, we met on May 1 via Zoom and we had three items on our agenda, two of which have already been talked about. I'll go in sort of reversed order. We also got an update with respect to the current state of the budget and budgeting process. And like you all had said, certainly something that's gonna have to be addressed in fast and frantic fashion as we get more information, but we just don't have anything solid that we can work with right now. We talked about the ISD proposed budget and I had some questions with respect to that. It is the recommendation of our committee that we approve the ISD budget as presented. And then the last item was a staffing update. And frankly, you know, kudos to Kim and Mark and everyone that works with them because they are proceeding as normal in a very un-normal time to try to address, you know, things as they change on the fly. We have to proceed as if we are going to go forward with the next year, just like it was any other year, although we all know that that's not probably gonna be the case. They're on top of it and things are going well so far.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Okay, that concludes the reports for this evening. Heading into our action items, our first is a consent briefing that has the meeting minutes from the March 4th Board Meeting. Anybody wish for that to be removed for further discussion? Okay, I'm hearing none. So is there a motion out there to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved to approve the meetings, meeting minutes, sorry, of March 4?
Okay, so Dr. Watson and there was a support by...
I'd supported that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hagadon? Okay. Dr. Watson?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm taking a vote.
Oh, hi.
Thank you. Mrs. Becker?
Hi.
Mr. Hagadon?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Mr. Nolan?
Hi.
Mrs. Novak?
Hi.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries, seven to zero. Okay, next on the agenda is the ISD 2020-2021 General Fund Operating Budget Resolution.
I move the ISD budget be approved as presented.
Support.
Hey, I have a motion and by Mr. Nolan and support by Mr. Keller. Okay, Mrs. Novak?
I'm an abstain due to my position on the ISD Board.
Okay. Mr. No...
What was that? You broke up.
I'm sorry. Mr. Nolan?
Oh, hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Mr. Hagadon?
Hi.
Mrs. Becker?
Hi.
Dr. Watson?
Hi.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, next we have the Resolute Authorizing Negotiation of a Sale of Real Property of the School District, White Property.
I would like to make a motion that the agreement with the City of Lapeer and the sale of the white property be approved as presented. Support.
Okay, so Mrs. Becker has a motion and Mrs. Novak supports. Hey. Mrs. Novak?
Hi.
Hey, Mr. Nolan?
I abstain due to conflict of interest. I'm the city attorney and have been involved in the negotiation of this agreement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Mr. Hagadon?
Hi.
Mrs. Becker?
Hi.
Dr. Watson?
Hi.
And Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, so that leads us to the action on the agenda for going into closed session.
I'll make a motion that we move into closed session to discuss negotiations.
Support.
Hey, Mrs. Novak makes a motion and Mr. Hagadon supports. Mrs. Novak?
Hi.
Mr. Nolan?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Mr. Hagadon?
Hi.
Mrs. Becker?
Hi.
Dr. Watson?
Hi.
And Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay. So we will be headed into closed session. So we are back into our regular open session. So the next action item on our agenda is the 2022 SEIU Food Service Agreement. So Kim, could you just give us a little brief history before we take a motion on this?
Sure. The timeline for this agreement is a bit unusual in light of everything that's been happening in our state lately. Just a quick history, we had four open units this year and really began the bargaining process quite some time ago. We had hoped to start early and kind of take one unit at a time. Back earlier this year, we actually settled one contract and began negotiating with the unit that you are being asked to ratify tonight. We worked with the food service unit just a little bit over a month and were able to, we signed a tentative agreement back on March 5. Shortly after March 5, the unit held a ratification vote amongst its members. And on March 9, the unit approved the contract. We were scheduled to approve this agreement at the April Board Meeting. That's when we had planned to bring it to you. But obviously, that was not too long after the closures took place and we were trying to figure some things out and we decided to postpone until tonight. So unfortunately, there's been quite a bit of time since this was discussed and really a tentative agreement was in place. And now, and you know, the financial landscape has changed a bit. But this agreement, just again, to be very clear, you know, we were in agreement and wrote that TA very early in March. And it's been a little bit of a delay because of some of the things that have been happening. But we are pleased to be able to bring it to you tonight.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate that.
I move we approve the SEIU Food Service Agreement as presented.
Or support.
Support? I think that was Mrs. Novak?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Nolan, support by Mrs. Novak. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I'm hearing none. Mrs. Novak?
Hi.
Mr. Nolan?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Mr. Hagadon?
Hi.
Mrs. Becker?
Hi.
Dr. Watson?
Hi.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries, seven to zero. So that concludes the action items of our agenda this evening. So that brings us to Board Member Communication and Topics. Is there anyone who'd like to have something tonight that wants to start?
I just wanted to say thanks to Mike for that great article in the paper. I echo the comments about the food service. I was able to volunteer one day and with my son, actually, and it was a great experience. Those ladies work so hard and it was just so heartwarming to do. So I appreciate having that opportunity.
I second that, Lisa. My wife and I helped a few different times and then we were helping with the actual deliveries as well. And it was amazing what they're doing and it wasn't always great weather either. So it was cold, snow, rain, wind. I think there was one day there was sunshine. It wasn't any of the days we were there, but there was one day. But yeah, they were phenomenal. So I have to agree.
I'll third that. Just want to thank the food service and our grounds department. I know they've been unloading trucks and I'd like to thank them. And then this past Saturday was supposed to be the football golf outing that has now been moved to mid-July. So Lord willing, hopefully, we can have that.
I think we are all gonna second that. They're doing an amazing job. And it's just great that we can do this for our kids and make sure that, you know, nobody is going hungry. So that is an awesome thing that we're able to do for everyone.
And I'll fifth that or sixth that, whatever it is by now. It's great to just have people that are really pouring their heart into the community, doing the work they're doing. There are so many people in need. But I also want to mention that, you know, we've had some small discussions here and there about what the school startup might look like, you know, in September or August, whatever it's gonna be. And I think we really have to start taking a look at what does that mean for board policy in different ways. I think there may be some changes on how that whole operation might work and we might want to get ahead of that if we can so that we're not having to react. We can have that discussion later.
I, just to jump back onto the kudos train, not only the food staff and groundskeepers, I gotta say, our teachers and all the staff that, I mean, I don't know how to say it because they went from being normal to completely abnormal in about a week and a half and they made it work. And is it perfect? No. Is it gonna change? Yes. But they did it and I, kudos to everyone, Matt on down, to make this happen for the kids, keep things going. It's pretty amazing. So kudos.
Yeah, I agree. Craig, you just took that right out of my mouth. I was gonna say, you know, the opportunity I had to put that article in the paper was for a group that I think is relatively unknown and they should be known. They're an amazing group of people. I went in there as a volunteer on one day. It touched me and I have been back every week since. And, you know, the coolest thing was they called me an honorary lunch dude. That's about as good as it gets. And, but it is certainly far on and beyond the food service folks. I mean, you're right, Craig. It's everybody. Everyone on this screen, Matt, Kim, Michelle, Jared, Mark. I see Jennifer on there, Mary. I mean, all of you guys have done an amazing job to keep the district running in some really unusual, very adverse times. Our teaching staff has done amazing things. I have seen already the benefit of our decision with respect to Mayfield. I've seen parts of Mayfield arrive at other parts of our district already, even with respect to food service. Some of the equipment in Mayfield has come in to help tremendously in terms of storing all of that food in the distribution. It's funny how, you know, one thing affects others, but related but different. I couldn't help when I was listening to you guys talk. If you remember The Wizard of Oz, at the very end Dorothy says, "Next time I go looking for my heart's desire, I won't look any further than my own backyard." If you want to see great people and you want to see heroes at work, all you gotta do is walk around Lapeer or pay any attention to anything that is happening within our district. Because if you pay attention, you're gonna see that all these great things are happening in our own backyard. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone on our staff and those involved with our staff. They have truly stepped up and we are very, very fortunate to have them.
So I agree with everyone's comments tonight. I echo all the same. I appreciate absolutely everything that's been done through all members of our district, the food service. I also volunteered and also delivered meals. And it was just amazing to be a part of that and to see that continue to go on to, you know, help everybody that's in need. There's one other group that I think I want to thank tonight is it was very difficult for the teachers to flip the switch and to go online and to teach our students. But I'd like to give kudos to all the parents out there who have overnight become teachers to help their students go online, you know, encourage them to participate and do all the things that they're being asked to do from the teacher's perspective. I know that can't be easy for some. You know, maybe some of them don't even have the best at the technology, but they're all hanging in there. I think everything seems to be going well. So kudos to everybody that has involvement in educating our kids still today in this new environment that we're living in. So I think with that, I think that wraps up the board topics communication. So Superintendent Wondry, I'll pass it on over to you.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. Great, great comments tonight from the board. Really appreciate everyone's flexibility and latitude in meeting in this capacity. I know it's challenging, but I think it went very well, you know, minus a few technology hiccups. But it is Teacher Appreciation Week, so it's appropriate that, you know, we're mentioning the fact that our hardworking teachers, along with a number of our staff, made the transition that a number of you mentioned. But we'd be remiss if we didn't, you know, mention those hardworking folks. I think it's really also important in order to support what teachers do in the classroom, whether it's the physical face-to-face, traditional environment we're used to or virtually. It really does take our entire village to pull that off. We have parapros, we have principals, secretaries, all of whom are working directly with families, troubleshooting tech issues, helping support our staff, making copies, mailing things home to our families that don't have access. So the parish principals, secretary is really a big part of supporting our teachers' direct instruction with kids. Our custodians coming in and disinfecting our buildings if there are staff in the facilities during the course of the day. So I, you know, personally have seen our custodians cleaning keyboards and door handles and just doing some really non-traditional type stuff. But everyone's pitching in in a unique capacity. Our transportation staff, a big part of helping the food service delivery component that was already mentioned by a number of you. So, you know, each different group contributing in their own way to make this experience, although unique and challenging, as positive a one as possible for all of our kids and our families. And I do want to echo what Summer mentioned about the homeschooling parents now that have probably a deeper appreciation for all of the employees that I just mentioned and helping care for our community's kids. It's not as easy as it looks, right? So thanks to our parents for also supporting our efforts. And, you know, in my original YouTube message at the community, we asked that all parties involved simply put forth a good faith effort. And I think it's more than obvious that the groups mentioned have all done that. Patience, flexibility, agility, you know, adapting to changing circumstances. Just want to say thank you. I know there's a lot of questions in the community about end of the year activities, things like graduation and all the other things that impact our seniors in particular. But also, you know, we didn't, we're not going to get to end of the school year in a traditional way. Want you to know that there are a number of conversations happening behind the scenes right now about possibilities for all of the senior events and some other, you know, non-graduation events as well. Not ready to make any announcements at this point, but we did say initially that our primary focus when we started this whole process was gonna be to get the online learning up and running. That's been quite a success. Now our focus is gonna shift to some of the other kind of nuts and bolts, logistics event type things that parents in the community have questions about. So more to come on that. I wanted to let everyone know that there's lots of discussions about what next year is going to look like. And that is not something that is isolated to Lapeer Community Schools. I have a call on Friday with not only the county superintendents, but all superintendents in a six-county area who are going to begin the discussion of, without really knowing what the direction from the state is at present, what next school year might look like. You know, will it be a virtual experience for students starting in the fall? Will it be 100% back to normal? Will it be some hybrid or 50/50 combination of both those, those possibilities? And so we're going to collaborate with other districts to hear what other folks are considering and planning. And obviously, from a county perspective, we do share some programs through the ISD and have to be aware and cognizant of some of those things as well. So those conversations, not just about the schedule and how we administer education, but also the school calendar, obviously made more complex here in Lapeer because we have a year-round component with also the traditional calendar. So we'll be having some conversations about all those things in the next few weeks in the hopes that we can deliver some more definitive plans to the community about what next school year will actually look like for you and your family. So we're beginning to move into some of those other logistic considerations right now. So more to come, and stay tuned. Obviously, we are, I've been hearing some great feedback from the principals with their PAC meetings that they're doing via Zoom. Lots of parents participating, and I was actually talking to one of our principals today that joked we might, even if we are back to normal next year, shift all of our building PAC meetings to Zoom because the attendance is quadruple our normal rate. So there has been some positive impact of the, this unique challenge. So back to you, Madam President. Thanks very much, and I look forward to seeing all of you soon.
Thank you. I do echo, though, your point real quick on the PAC meetings. I was super impressed in the participation for the high school. It was largely, it was a huge population that came, so it's great. So I think it might be a good avenue to pursue for the future. So I think with that, I am ready for a motion to, for adjournment tonight.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Support.
Was that Mr. Keller support?
Nolan.
Nolan, okay, sorry, I didn't see yours flash up. Okay, so I have a nomination for Mrs. Becker and a support for Mr. Nolan. So Mrs. Becker?
Hi.
Mr. Hagadon?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Mr. Nolan?
Hi.
Mrs. Novak?
Hi.
Dr. Watson?
Hi.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Hey, our meeting is adjourned.